Basting, absent. Bush.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Dahl.
Here.
Lindsay.
Here.
Stuffis.
Stanford pledge, or am I jumping the gun there?
I'll do that.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First agenda item, we talked about this on Monday night. We have an accepted offer. The rate is thirteen fifty an hour, but it will be for sixteen hours a week. There's no early childhood on Wednesday, so it'd be from now until the end of the year, we with salary and the only benefit that would be paid would be our portion of social security. It would be just a little over six thousand dollars. And all of that is flow-through money, so that's no district monies at all. But I would need a motion to approve Kim Kitehler as the early childhood instructional aide.
That sounds good. Okay, all those in favor? Aye, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay. Item two, in all honesty, we will probably end up tabling. I come back to your board policy and do the scope of the project for purchasing if you look at the end of this policy, I think it's six seventy-two point one. Administrative professionals staff exercise sound education, fiscal judgment, selection of recommendations, such materials bids shall be sealed for contracts in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. School district deserves right to reject any or all bids or quotes and to accept that the bid or quote, which appears to be in the best interest of the school district, taking a variety of factors into consideration. Okay? Obviously, we're talking about a project that's going to be slightly above a hundred thousand dollars, so in order for us to proceed according to your board policy, we will need to accept sealed bids for any of the work that's going to be done moving forward on the project. You had asked FEH and Kramer's on Monday night to submit contracts. They have emailed me contracts at this point in time. They have not been released anywhere at this at this moment, so they can be considered bids in this process, but we would need to ask for RFPs for moving forward to get the scope of the project in play here. Though I don't know if you in essence, in order for us to follow our policy, we would need to table that agenda item. But we would also need to get this out as quickly as possible in order for us to keep moving forward, so that if there is the hope to be in in the fall of 2020, we certainly need to.
So Mitch, my question is, so you're asking for these gentlemen to give us sealed bids for their portion of the work?
That would be correct.
The bid's already public.
That's what I thought. This is public. And the other thing, does that mean that they're going to be competitive bids?
Well, I don't know. Maybe Kevin can enlighten me, or maybe even Angie might have some background on the work that was done this summer, how that proceeded, because the total scope of that project ended up being over a hundred thousand dollars. So Kevin, I guess, what kind of contract did you have in place? You know, something that was negotiated between you and Luke, or?
It was a negotiated contract.
Okay.
And to do the security work, we basically did that then as as an ad, so the contract that was already in place for the roof and that was through the Act thirty-two, remember? We just snuck that in before the end of the year, so that we could use the Act thirty-two approach. And obviously, the state doesn't require you to go through that, that's your own policy, obviously. But our our fees were identified when we did the workshop and the campaign, because our budget detail shows our fees right there. So our fees are basically public information.
Because of that, can we circumvent that policy or not?
I think that's that would be up to you as a school board to make that decision.
It would be fair if the
Correct.
If the hit's there, maybe they'll then come in bid under.
And in essence, there was a contract and technically, you're asking to maybe change the version, the wording of your contract, because you were design-build and now you're you would like to see that changed to just the design component for this next facet of the project, correct?
Correct.
So on the architect's side, in essence, you have a contract. The ask is to just modify that contract from design-build to just be the designer, the architect of the project.
And that's already been approved? That contract has been approved?
That that design-build contract was approved.
So that means just could prove changes to that contract?
Essentially, amending that contract.
Does the current contract include the future remodel?
No.
So we would need a new contract anyway, basically designating FEH as the designer for the remodel project, correct? And I'm in possession of that piece.
Okay. Okay, so the part that's been made public? Is that for the new building? Is that for the new renovation?
Yeah.
Does it already been made public?
Yeah.
So I can look at that and say, if that's my dollars, I'm going to bid. You know?
How did I?
Yeah.
That was, I think that was a component of the eleven point nine two million dollars, was all rolled into that into that projection.
Great. So then, are we going to need we're going to use a new contract, or are we just going to amend the current contract? We're going to need a new contract, or are we going to amend the current contract?
Well, we basically provided a new format for a contract.
Okay, but is it the same total?
Because it's, because the contract we have, the dollar amount that we provided is the same. But in the cost breakdown, and these cost breakdowns that we shared with the public. So the fee is design-only, unlike the larger contract that we had in place once December for the re-roof and then the remodel, because it designed build contract.
So then, the amount we have in there includes the new renovation? The new?
The amount we have is for the new renovation.
And that's been made public?
Yep.
Okay. So then we need to, somebody needs to
amend it?
Yeah. Amend that contract?
Amend from design-build to simply the design of the building project.
Does the contract, does the current contract state that if the referendum passes, that FEH would be the designer for that project?
I I I am not in possession of that contract. I have not seen that contract for the summer.
Do we have it on, we must have it on file, correct?
It was the understanding.
Right, I mean, we don't want to breach any contract agreement that's already been made.
Correct.
So we're just amending it, really.
Let's see if I can get my hands on it quickly.
Well, I'm in Luke's office. Yeah. In the, great, we don't have a contract with, we, you're contracted to fix the roof. And you did, you have several contracts for the roof in this front entrance.
Yeah, actually, because of the structure of that, that was, that was worth FEH, so. But we then helped the district solicit competitive bids for the roofing company.
Right.
This would be our first direct contract with General.
Got it.
Everything else is backed to judge.
Okay.
And we did write a separate contract for the planning and we got two separate contracts with you. One was the Act thirty-two stuff. And then another one was for kind of the planning and design process. So the Act thirty-two stuff, contract that we did in December, was a design-build contract where we held everything. So we functioned as the architect and the design builder. And then we had a contract for the referendum and design services. And that was a short version abbreviated contract, basically. So that the understanding is, if the referendum passes, we'll serve as the architect for the project that comes out of it. And it was vague, because it could be anything that comes out of that process. We went through a public engagement process. It could have been adding a couple classrooms here, or adding a couple classrooms there, or remodel there, or anything. So it was, we're basically kind of opening.
But if there was no contract, then then in my opinion, we still have to kind of play that in. I mean, it's unfortunate if it if it does happen to be that way. However, I mean, if it's all of a sudden, okay, this is FEH's bid, and all of a sudden, it's unfortunate that it was opened in the public, but if we come in two million dollars under that from another, obviously, we take things into consideration. If somebody tries to undercut, it'd be obvious to me, but.
We started. Oh, yeah.
And maybe, maybe not, okay.
It sort of worked two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You started it. Yeah? Well, then, the, even if we do that, then the builder, I think we still have to open that up. Obviously, we worked with Kramer's, but again, I mean, we can't just jump to, you know, you don't go to a car lot and say, oh, yeah, this is the one I'm going to buy. I may have checked the neighborhood too. It's unfortunate. We've worked with them, and hopefully, they can come in, but we still have to kind of competitively open that up. I mean.
Would this be on the side of the contract?
That's
Yes and no.
That's the question. I mean, so I don't know. Everything, Kevin, everything I see in this folder for FEH, everything references roof and repaired middle school, high school. I don't know if you have it.
Yeah, that's just the roof repair contract. I'm looking for the, the design contract.
Is that rolled into the share-up piece?
Is that?
Is that rolled into the share-up contract?
Yeah.
We should have a separate contract from the share-up process and all that stuff. Because we approve that separately. Should we just table this, get this clarified?
We might have to.
What, but what is?
What does the contract state?
What's the state, what is, you know, if we already have an agreement with FEH to do this?
Yeah, and then, and then we, and then basically, go from there to the contractors and say, you know, kind of, if we're able to, if there's no contract, then, you know, at least push that out to bids, because it's, you know, we kind of have to have a.
Why don't we, why don't we get this information, do like an operations committee meeting to sort through all that?
Next week at some point or something.
And then we can have a final vote at the December board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can.
On design?
Twelve million dollars, somebody would.
Are we going to? Can we take that long?
The only thing that's really, is the finance, right? I mean, everything else is, obviously, unless FEH is by contract and signed, otherwise. But we want to do a special.
Well, we'd have us say if we need.
But at least sign a contract.
Then, yeah.
We can amend that.
Right.
We don't want to.
Mitch, we need assistance right now.
Yeah.
For the contractor?
Yes, we will.
So probably, because it's clear we need to. So we can assist with that. We did that for Cuba City. We've done that with lots of other projects. The policy's clear that we have to bid on the
The contract.
It's a separate.
I'm finding that. I'm just trying to picture in my mind. Yeah, we should probably put a timeline there.
Just so we can, like, just like clarify things. I'll make most of it table this until we find out more information and get the contracts in order to figure out what we actually are signing or agreeing to.
Second.
The only, the only document, and I just shared this with Kevin, he said there's actually multiples of this. There's another document here, signed by Luke November twenty-seventh, a year ago, and it was space needs evaluation, capacity study of the elementary school. So that was a component, I think, of a much larger contract that was put together from FEH. So.
Luke's intent was to take small steps, so we just early outline a contract at the beginning, and I was hoping, and we added these pieces as they were requested. I, I'm going through my file. I already found four of them.
Yeah.
And I'll probably find.
Not only for paint, though. Remain renovation.
Right. It was an overall planning contract that we issued.
So on other projects, the Cuba City, for example, just walk us through. When you were on.
Cuba City, for example, was a process where we was another one where there was a transition of the superintendent. Aaron Olson's there now, and he wasn't there at the beginning, but we basically wrote an overall contract to do preliminary work, because obviously, you can't commit to specific design project until there's an outcome.
From, from, by the time the referendum passed, did you have to bid on that project? You did not, okay.
No, we just basically provided, we just provided our contract, just like we did with you to move forward.
A contract that you think we already have?
No. Well, yes, I mean, the contract I provided to Mitch is the contract that is specific to what was passed in a referendum. Obviously, you're not going to pay us to do any work ahead of the referendum until you have the money. So once the referendum pass, we create the final contract, the same thing in River Ridge, the same thing in Cuba City, doing the same thing in Belmont.
In them projects, did you act as the design, did you hold the design and the builder contract, or just the design?
In Belmont, River Ridge, for example, just the design. In Menlo Point, we were the design builder.
Okay.
The contractor worked on for us. If that's not typically how it's approached, they really weren't that approach.
Cuba City?
You mean Cuba, the rest of them?
Cuba City, yeah, but the others, only one of us to serve as the designer.
And Cuba City was, you know, the design handle?
Yes.
Okay.
Cuba City, we're the design end builder. River Ridge, we were just the architect. Most of our other projects, we just served as the architect.
I think that's where the board needs some clarity. And we got to give these guys some direction too. Are we going to have the design firm be, hold the building contract also, or are we going to separate it all?
Did they, I thought they said Monday, certain contacts actually provided us more.
That's a, we discussed. Yeah.
Okay. And I, that's, that's how I want to proceed myself. Okay.
And that's the contract we provided to Mitch, was just design services for.
Okay.
All right, what about this previous motion?
The way I have motion on the table.
Do you have that contract with, with you, Mitch?
I brought two.
The design contract? Yeah, it's in my office.
All right. I'll bring up that out to bid. We probably don't want to release that information then.
Typically, architects don't bid. I mean, our fees are not considered bids, they're considered.
Purchase service.
Proposal, yeah. And I consider bids.
Can we talk about the fee?
It's already out there.
What, what is it, their fee into designing?
Well, we have motion on the table, but we haven't.
But this is part of the discussion, Tony. Part of the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. More information, the better. We spent twelve million dollars, my side of town.
Right, I understand.
Twelve million dollars is a whole lot of money.
I understand.
And you and I live on the same side of town.
So our fee that's out there is seven hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Which brings it.
That's a six point six, six point four percent fee for architecture, engineering, chemical, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, ISAT, interior design services. We already gotten prior, a few, a couple of weeks before the referendum, we sent out RFPs for civil engineering, for site survey for you. That's what the WISR engineering site survey proposal is that hopefully you approve tonight. We need that site survey so that we can proceed quickly. There's also some discrepancies on property that you own, because according to the county, school district doesn't own a couple of pieces of property. So we, that needs to be worked out ahead of time. And there's a fee for that. We also got proposals for them for the civil engineering design. So the site survey work is contracted directly to the school district, design was contracted to the architect. And we got proposals for geotechnical engineering, but Roger found the geotechnical engineering for the last project, so that's going to save you about seven, eight thousand dollars, which is really good news. That's what we had budgeted in the project budget for you. And we got proposals for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, information systems design, data telecom.
These pieces of property that we do not own, is that, do you think areas where you need to work?
Oh, yeah. One's, one bidman sits on.
Who?
Uh, different. The city owns two pieces, and the neighbor owns.
Jim, uh, be the Jim and Jim Bennett's property now?
It's not Mitch.
If the price is right, you could have it, if he's mine.
He's close.
So Jim's in that brick house probably on the corner?
No, um, at the top of the driveway. That gray house, that was his mom's, mom and dad's place. On the most recent map, that property is.
You have those maps?
L-shaped.
I think you have the map because it attached to. I love it, too. We're getting a little bit off track when it's on the agendas.
Getting under spot on, Kevin, yeah? Neighbors and your girlfriend?
Those marbines down there are really kind of crazy.
Only so.
Especially up.
Sounds like we may have.
There is one. The bus line gets a corner up, and that's how big the property that the nephew purchased from. There we go. So the one in red.
Jim Bennett's.
See the big one in red on the right? That's, it's property bound.
Yeah, this is where Jim Bennett lives now.
Right.
And according to the county, this is his property.
He owns second grade.
Yes.
Well, he should be funding.
He's been cleaning ass rooms out every day, too.
So then, yeah, you see the other pieces that are.
And there's a strip here, which is on the hillside.
That's city owned.
And then, this was, this was Bob Ivy's house.
Right.
So this is that back past year, and according to the county, that would be part of Bob's old piece of land. Chase Ivy now owns that back field.
Is this, is this a county survey?
This is.
Has it been surveyed recently?
They, this is from the proposer to provide the survey for you and to do flatwork. This is what he found on the county's site to provide his services, so he would know what the scope of his work is.
What about to the left of the private albatair of Mitch? What is that?
That's city street.
The, this?
Yeah.
The city owns that, though.
And, and that when Bob was still alive, he had the land surveyed. And I remember surveyors' marks being about halfway through the track. And the surveyor come in and said, well, according to what I have, the information I have, you own out to here. And then Chase had it resurveyed, because he's split this land into three lots back here. And Chase knocked on my door and said, I don't know if you'd be interested in buying anything back here behind your house. And he shared with me what he had had surveyed, and only have Chase's word. I don't have a handshake or anything else to go on, but in essence, he was saying his survey showed he owned this property, but because the school district had maintained it for years and years and years, he was just going to basically gift that piece of the property, so where this, this chain-linked fence is, he actually owned on the opposite side. In Chase's words, he would just gift that to the school district and make it just a clean break at that point in time. But Kevin is coming in saying the county has this different plan.
So we get to clean this up.
And I, and I think, you know, not being a twenty-eight-year resident of Menlo Point, it's not nearly long enough to know how many times a property deal was done with a handshake and a tap a beer downtown, and, you know, and then you kind of, well, yeah, put the stake there and away we go, so.
So the Bennetts have been paying taxes on that piece of property?
Well, then Roger had gone down to City Hall and talked about it, and basically, according to City Hall, you know, there's a fence line here, and, and that's kind of the end of their property, so that's what the city has been assessing this Bennett property on is just down to this fence line down here, which would be just north of the sidewalk. But again, Debbie Heisner had said, you would need to go higher up the food chain, you know, go to the county, get, get more accurate, detailed information. What's been recorded, what hasn't been recorded. I think there's been probably a lot of that over time around here as well.
Well, I can say from personal experience, because the county maps are not always accurate. When you have a surveyor come in and survey, it can be very different. So we might, I can't believe they would have built the elementary school on the county.
Well, my, I was just using this as an example of some of the work that we've been doing.
Yes, well, I know, but. Well, my, my sense for the sake of this motion is that we pass this motion so that we can sort out what contracts we have, what contracts we need, what, what do we need to do in accordance with board policy?
And I have no problem with that. It's unfortunate we don't have that information recording.
Correct. And then, in the meantime, we let FEH keep moving forward. We let this site survey continue to happen. And, you know, if, if for whatever reason, you know, if we intervene with a different designer, we will reimburse FEH with whatever efforts they've done to date on this project. And so that we're not slowing anything down, but we, I would support getting all our ducks in a row. We know, so that we know, so we have good, solid contracts moving forward that we all think about.
Sure. Yeah, what have you done to date, Kevin, other than this upcoming survey, I guess? You said there is some design work already done.
We're starting to create the building model for the existing building. What that means is, now when you draw floor plans, you actually draw three dimensions. So we're creating the model for the existing building. We probably have twenty thousand dollars invested so far.
And that's on top of the fees that we've already paid you for all the other previous work, right, like for the?
Yes.
You're just saying the last two weeks or so?
That's probably about seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. We probably have about twenty thousand invested at this point.
One of the documents in here was signed by Larry as board president one time. One of these documents is signed by Luke. Would it be beneficial to get anything else that had been agreed upon between Luke and FEH? A copy of that at least in your hands, so you know kind of some of the agreements?
I guess, that had been made prior to where we are today?
The contracts that you have thus far, though, are for the roof, for the entry. Did you ever find one for that Chertan, yes, what do you guys call it?
Charette.
The Charette workshop.
I don't know if that, it doesn't specifically say that it's, it's the.
I would have it the office.
Space Needs Evaluation Capacity Study of the Elementary School.
That was prior to this?
That was prior to the Charette, prior to their time spent in district, meeting with community members, students, staffs. So, I mean, here's, again, a small breakout contract, a piece of probably the larger agreement, so.
And what I recollect from the contract was that we provide these design services for the Charette. I don't remember exactly what the fee was, but it also said that if the referendum passes that we would be selected and we would provide a credit back of the value of the conceptual designing toward the overall schematic design and the range of like ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that, that document.
I have nothing.
Yeah.
In any record other than what I just shared with you now, so.
Okay. I do have, I did bring timelines to share with everybody, fast with the hand. So, those are the timelines we put together. For the process, you can see on there the ten percent of schematic design, that design development, and then the construction document phase. The way the process works, there's three phases of the design. It's really four. The conceptual design's done, schematic design has been started. At the end of schematic design, we basically have, these are where the walls are at. We conceptually understand what the engineer's approach will be, but we don't have it designed yet. So, at the end of schematic design, we kind of come back to you with a budget update and usually the contractor's involved in helping us with that budget to say, "Yep, we're still on budget, we're not going to move walls around anymore. And we're going to turn the engineers' loose on more of their calculations, whether it's calculating volumes of rooms, so they can size ductwork, calculating lighting, so that we get the right light levels, structural calculations get started, so, because they can size fans and crosses and that kind of stuff." And the reason it's set up that way is so that we don't decide in the middle of the design development phase, "No, we're going to move this wall," because the engineers have to start over and redo their gals, and nobody wants that. And once the design development phase is complete, then we update the budget again, we get a lot more engineering information, and then we get approval from you to proceed with the construction documents, construction of the document phase. And then we complete those, we know updated, we kind of guarantee the maximum price to the contractor. And then you approve us to issue it to bid and we get the bids. If a general contractor's on board, and that's pretty much how things work in Wisconsin, the general contractor is involved in procuring those bids, providing the cost estimating services, and Kramer Brothers has been very good at that because they are working with all these contractors all the time and their numbers are very accurate. And they provide a guaranteed maximum price approach about maybe a third of the way of the construction document phase. But then every subcontract is bid, and you get to see every bid on bid day.
Right.
Participate in the selection of the subcontractors.
Is six percent in that area, Kevin?
If we were.
Normal commission for design.
For, if we were building a new building on a greenfield site, we could do five and three-quarter to seven is what you'd see on a new building.
Okay.
A renovation like this, it's usually seven and a half to nine percent, because it's pretty intense and we know we're going to discover all kinds of stuff. And once we start construction, our design team is still going to be working pretty hard on design because we're going to find things that we have to design.
Sure.
So, those percentages are usually higher, but because we don't have the expense of going through another round of kind of interview process kind of thing, we, we don't have to have our fee quite as high. And we know the building from the assessment work that we did, is to give a condition assessment, so. So, I think our number is like six point, six, between six point four and six point six percent. So, it's a very competitive fee. You're getting a really good deal.
The builder in the room would tell you that that's the case, not only with FEH, but other architects in the school industry and the proposal that you have from Kevin has a very competitive.
Yeah, I'll still hold that motion as far as tabling the general contractor selection till we get all the, get everything. Well, actually, I'm, I'm going to say that we open that up as long as it's not violating any contract to get a few different quotes for the general contractor, the CM. So, that's my motion.
And it was seconded?
Was seconded.
The motion originally was tabled.
It was, it's tabled, so.
We would have to pull that back.
Yeah.
We're changing.
So, are we going to, is that what we want to do then?
Well, you'd have to vote on the motion that's on the table.
That's on the first block.
Or they don't.
Yeah, I can switch that around, didn't I?
I, while I'm here.
Yeah.
I'd love to offer you some, some thoughts and, and suggestions and things to think about. You, you're in a, a position that lots of school boards are in and the policies that you have sometimes are a fit or are not a perfect fit for exactly what you're trying to orchestrate here. So, that, that's always something important to keep in mind. On the, on the build side of things, similar to Kevin's answer about bids, okay? And, and if you open up things to consider, things from other contractors, which is fine, you're always entitled to do that, they are not bids, okay? And back to my picture description from the other night, if you're asking for proposals on fees, okay, that's not a bid on your project. So, it's important to understand the difference between a construction contract of ten point whatever million and a fee proposal, okay, on a percentage of your contract. Okay, so recognize the difference in that. What most school districts have done, and this is why contractors get selected all across the state, is that you want to capture the subcontractor and supplier market to have those bids come to one party, okay? Because otherwise, if you don't, you end up with a dilution of bids. So, let's say Larry and Andy and Kevin and I were all school builders, okay? And you wanted us to bid the entire project, okay? Kevin might have the low plumbing bid, I might have the low electrical bid, Larry might have the low fire protection bid, and Andy might have the low roofing bid, and no one contractor will have all of the low, the low bids, okay? So, that's why school districts choose a construction manager so that all of the bidding, if anybody wants to bid on Mineral Point, it comes to Kramer Brothers. And that collection of that ninety-seven percent of your project being competitively bid that way is what drives your costs down, okay, versus that two point three-five percent fee that I proposed to the district, okay? Which is actually low and I've shared that with Mitch, okay, because of our priority and interest in doing it. So, I, I understand your policy. I want you to understand how this whole thing works, okay? And, and why districts and other boards have made the decision that's they, that they have to select somebody to do that. Okay, let's play some more of this out a little bit. Kevin talked about budgeting and, and also construction input through the design process, okay? If you waited until the end, okay, and bid the project to builders at the end of the design process, number one, that's months from now, okay? So, you don't have a builder on your team until months from now, okay? So, why districts have made, also made that decision, a big part of it has been from a schedule standpoint, because you will, in essence, lose a school year if you wait until the end of the design process to get a builder on board, okay? And that, so now you're going to have four to six percent inflation on the entire project that market, okay? So, schedules, another big part of that. And then the other part was just what I mentioned before, the construction input, okay? So, you don't have any budgeting and any construction input. Kevin's a good architect, but I'd sure like to give him some construction input because I think we're a pretty good building. And so, if you go through that whole design process with no construction input along the way and no budgeting from the builder along the way, okay? You might get to the end of that design process, bid the project, like the state and the county and the university have done hundreds of times, and find out you're over budget. And then you've got to start over again. Then you've got to send Kevin back to the drawing board and say, "Kevin, okay, now we got to take some scope out of this thing, so we do that." So, now you've just lost another big chunk of time, okay? So, those are just important considerations and, and I respect and honor what you have to do as a board, just trying to help you understand why other districts in similar positions to yours have made this kind of decision. And, and, and let me add one last thing. All builders are not created equal, are they? Okay? Whether it's residential or commercial, okay, they're not created equal, okay? And so, I honor and respect the fact that your fees for construction need to be competitive. Greg split a proposal in front of you that's very, very competitive, but how they manage a project, how they manage subcontractors, the volume of change orders that they have, their ability to solicit competitive bids and whether there's any restrictions on that or not, their geographic presence in an area and their understanding of the subs and suppliers in that market, there's a lot of things that go into that. And so, they're not created equal. And so, that's why we focused on this part of the state, that's why we focused on school districts in this part of the state. So, do you have questions?
I just want to say that I, I think you both have made clear that it's advantageous to get contractor and designer involved early.
Yep.
You've also made it clear that both FEH and Kramer Brothers offer unique advantages in this process.
Yep.
I think what, what we are trying to do is, number one, be consistent with what board's policy dictates us to do, and number two, we want to show the community that we're doing everything we can to save money on this project. And we want to feel like every time we have a chance to pick someone to be involved, that we've weighed our options.
Yep.
And so, I think we want to feel comfortable that we've done that, that we've, that we feel like we've vetted other options before we move ahead with, you know, that, with people that are already in the room.
Yep.
So, I, I know that might make you feel uncomfortable in the short term and we're trying to give this a sense of urgency, you know, in respect of the timeline, but I, I think we just need to make sure we're doing the right thing and that the community sees that we're, we're spending time making sure that we're picking the right people to handle this size of a project.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
And, and that makes total sense. What I encourage you to do as a part of that process is to be extremely clear about what your criteria is.
I think we understand.
How long, if we were to RFP for the general's fee, how long generally would that process be? A couple of weeks?
You've got to write the RFP.
You've got to write the RFP.
Yeah.
And then typically, if we get something like that.
Central process. So, what if you send it out? If you send it out on one Monday, you'd want stuff back by like the following Friday or Thursday.
We usually have two weeks to respond if we were something like that.
So, if we were to, let's say we charged you today to RFP the, or the start to finish time?
We could write it, you know, in my case, a short week, but we could write it next week, so you can set it up without December, the Monday after Thanksgiving. Then you could.
Twenty-eight somewhere in there.
Yeah, you have to do it December seventh, that following Friday. It's actually what we did and keep proceeding, because the contractor, we wanted them working for us, so we sent them RFP, just a month, two weeks, presented the information back to, to the school district and board and reviewed each of those contractors. They had each one of them come in the next week, just give a forty-five minute talk, and then they pick the one that they thought was going to serve them the best.
Well, I don't think by waiting until then, if, if we have FEH do this, I, I, I don't think that that's, you know, stretching it out too far.
Oh, no, I'm just.
Just trying to get a timeline.
I'm trying to get a timeline, so maybe.
So that we can get the ball rolling and that out of that.
Yeah, no, I'm interested in what you're suggesting there.
Is that, I mean, the, the bid or fee, whatever we want to call it, is going to be over a hundred thousand dollars in total at two percent. So. And that's why I said before, Andy, if you want to make that criteria, criteria just the fee, then be very clear about that. And that's it. I would suggest to you as a district, there's a whole lot more to consider.
Right.
Well, and I think we would consider that, but.
Yep.
You would ask for qualifications or board policy.
And you want to know what's included. We would make sure that we got.
Everything. That's what we're suggesting, qualifications and what's included with them.
Yeah, the fee is the.
But that would be part of.
Yeah, part of.
You're not, you're not a RFP in all of Kansas.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't want two cents a piece of paper that says.
Mm-hmm. You got it. It was over, didn't it? Okay. Okay, so the current motion on the table is to.
Table.
To table this, but if we come to another conclusion, maybe we can get the ball rolling that way.
I think my main reservation on that, we're, we're thinking of ask, sending an RFP to both, for both the contractor and the designer?
I think more the contractor.
We think we're under a contract already with FEH.
Okay.
Just can't find it.
Which is, yeah, which is going to be sorted out kind of in this.
Yeah. I'll get it to Mitch.
Thank you.
So, more so the contractor.
Do we remember that assumption that FEH has already agreed to, that we've already agreed with FEH to design moving forward?
I've done so.
If we find out otherwise, I think we need to be.
I mean, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So, the question is whether we.
So, you can either vote on the motion to table, you can vote on that, or you can withdraw the motion.
I'm going to withdraw that motion because I think we've discussed it enough that we can move on to something different, different motion.
Withdraw the second.
Second half.
Okay. So, then if you would wish to go forward and, and ask FEH to do the RFP for general contractor, that would, that would get your, get the, keep the ball moving.
Okay. So, let's get the wording right here.
So, you're thinking, I'm, you got how I'm understanding, you're thinking, you want, you want your bid out than what Greg has brought to us?
The, basically, the, the builder.
Board policy.
Just, just to have a competitive bid, nothing, right? Nothing.
No, no.
As you.
Trust me, I, I encourage you and welcome the competition.
Absolutely. And so, that's basically, because if, and if we do, if we do have a contractor that FEH or if we don't have a contractor that FEH, that'll get P-Rock's attention today at some point, I'm assuming, if we can find that and then kind of keep that ball rolling, but not jump anything. Basically, you put out bids, proposals for the work, work for the contractor.
If, if we're going to bid up that service, I think we ought to bid up Kevin's service then, too.
We think we have existing contractors.
Well, I would have to suspect if we didn't have, I mean, that's, that's just me.
Well, I would have to suspect if we didn't have it done, I mean, that's just me.
I agree with you there.
Well, that's why the motion to table, right, because we didn't, we don't know for sure.
And we wanted to get all the information and then vote. We want to make sure we weren't in a contract with FEH. That's because we don't know for sure if we are or not. So what do you, what do you suggest, Larry, that we not make a, what do you suggest?
Well, if we're going to bid out, I think we have to have them both. I think they ought to be separate. I think the board is pretty much on the first floor with that.
We have a contract of those, you know, we do. We put a master contract together, the base, when we did the charade, what we basically said was, this is very time intensive, what I told Mitch was, this is very time intensive, you can do this for a lot of districts. We're not going to go through this exercise unless we're going to be selected as the architect.
Can you use, think that contract is in your office, Kevin, is that...
I, yes.
Maybe you just call somebody on there and send it back to...
I can hear it. We don't have a fax machine.
Well, whatever, just for the...
But I can get it to...
Yeah, exactly, well, that's very true.
Yeah. Sir, can you do it right now, so while the board is in session?
I don't think anybody there is going to be able to find it, believe me.
Okay. Larry, that's not the agenda as far as the architect, so we might have to do something, because this is for the general contractor and the purely civil engineer, so we might have to do something different anyway.
I mean, if we want to do an operations meeting Monday, you know, early next week, we let Kevin figure this out, and then we can clarify this, and we can do RFPs for both if we need to. You know what I mean? I mean, I get what you're saying. And I don't feel real comfortable, only because we're taking under assumptions, you know? So I think...
So your original motion may be more than for the...
Where's Jeff?
Okay, so I guess that's...
If you want to call it the, the special meeting.
If you're going to, yeah, if you want just two board members to show up and be able to take action, then it's a committee.
Right.
If all of you want to have a voice and a vote, then it has to be a special board meeting.
Okay.
So Monday, just Monday morning, Monday morning work for everybody? Is that what you said, Monday? Monday evening? Monday, Monday evening? Okay. Evening? Evening. Monday evening, does anybody have any, or if we can't make it at six?
Well, that's you and...
Six, maybe? Does that work for everybody?
Oh, six thirty.
Six thirty?
Oh, sorry.
Six thirty Monday night.
Special.
Did you vote to table it?
No, we didn't have it yet.
So actually, we need to take, now, we need to table that again. So we're back to the original...
We're basically, we're going to move to table the general contractor selection until we receive more information.
Correct.
That's the, that's, that's the motion.
Good motion from Tony.
And a second?
A second.
Okay.
Quickly vote.
Let's quickly vote on this.
Okay. Dahl?
Uh, yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers? Yes. All right, item three, civil engineer, this is something that we would be, we're paying for, it's, the results, reports basically are ours, it's needed for the builder. Is this through you, Kevin, or is this directly through us?
We issued an RFP to three civil engineering firms, and we asked them to provide us two separate quotes, one for the site survey work, and one for the site design work. We always recommend that we try to hire the same firm for both, doesn't always work out, but he would be contracted directly to Wiser Engineering, that's our recommendation for who to work with.
They were the, they were the low bid and able to provide all the services. So that information is going to come directly to us, and you, obviously, so...
We work with them directly.
Yeah, so, so there, do we want to, do we want to approve those, approve that, or table that, so Monday, too, probably, until we have more information?
We've got a lot of work to do, and we need to do it regardless. I recommend you approve that.
Well, yeah, we've worked extensively with them, they're excellent. They do a great job.
Yes.
Yes, Wade Morris.
Okay, so regardless, we're going to need them, so make them, I'll make the motion to approve number three.
Yeah, he gave you a very good fee. I figured it was because he was from here.
Uh, and that fee was sixty-five hundred.
It's four thousand for the survey, and then twenty-five hundred for the boundary work with you, and then he gave a, if he has to do plats, that legal plat stuff, he basically says to negotiate that once he figures out what plats need to be done.
Angie, can I have a question, please?
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Sorry, this is going to get rolled into the referendum dollar amount, though, correct?
Yes, and it's lower than what we included in the budget for the overall project.
So what was part of that?
Yeah, we created that budget, we had everything in there, so there's no surprises. And his number is well within the budget numbers we gave you.
Okay.
So Chambers was a yes, Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
So then for information discussion, we won't need, number one, since you're coming back on Monday night for a special board meeting, basically, this is why you're coming back Monday night. Question number two, then, comes back to, in this contract, this sixty-five-hundred-dollar contract, it's over five thousand dollars, your board policy talks about anything over five thousand dollars needs board approval. Is that your wishes as we move forward with the referendum, or would you prefer, as long as it's under the referendum, spending umbrella, that things can be approved compared to the budget presented and approved without your necessary approval, but certainly keeping you informed about all the things that are happening? In other words, are you wishing to have multiple meetings in order to approve anything through the referendum that comes in over five thousand dollars?
Sometimes during construction, it'd be, there could be a six or an eight thousand dollar ad, that as long as you can have a meeting like the next day, it's probably okay, but you don't want to delay the construction once we get there. So that's, the real question is, do you want to increase that five thousand dollar number to fifteen thousand or something different? That's all we're asking.
What about the, sorry, what's this schematic design budget, this, that, what happens to us?
Oh, yeah.
And that just includes...
The contract says we don't proceed with design development until you approve this given.
And that just includes the walls? That's not any of the questions.
There will still be an allowance for finishing, so there are numbers built in for every little thing in that budget.
If we stay within the budget of the total budget, I don't know if it is necessary that we have to approve everything. Because we're not going to be able to have a meeting every time there's going to be, you know, we need approvals, we have to have a quorum for that, too, and I think everybody's always available. But if we're within that budget of the referendum, and while we're not going over the budget, I mean, that would be a...
And it's not something you can do through email, that would constitute an illegal meeting at that point in time as well, so...
Or if there was a change in the design or the layout of the course, would it be bigger? Or would it have stayed ahead?
It's, you guys figure out what number you want there, that you're comfortable with. Maybe it's five thousand, maybe it's ten, maybe it's fifteen.
And my question is only in terms of the referendum project itself. It would not in play, be in play for any other thing, you know, it's not, somebody wants to buy a ten thousand dollar TV that I could just sign off on, that would not be something I would do to begin with, but again, just for referendum.
And what mostly is done with that policy in the past is if we've passed a full budget for something, whether it's technology or anything, anything that falls under that budget is considered approved if it's in that budget. So I think once we actually have, because right now we have this approved number to ask for, we have not approved a correct referendum budget as a board. One thing that, just to upper up, remember that you don't start construction typically until you've approved that guaranteed maximum price, okay? And most boards and districts, obviously, that's within your referendum budget, okay? And then, as I mentioned the other night, you're there and you see bid packages and bid results, so a lot of the boards just approve those bids in total.
Right.
Because there's all sorts of different numbers.
That makes sense to me. What I'm thinking through is, you know, what if something is way over, comes in way over budget, or what if there's a huge expense that ends up in the contingency fund? You know, are those things that, do you have kind of standard protocol, like, we will notify you if there's some huge outliers?
The contract defines that, and it basically, anything that's changed comes to you for approval unless it's something that affects safety on the job site, needs to be dealt with, or it's going to create a significant delay. And then we would basically start by going to Mitch, listed as your representative, to say, here's the item, we'd like your written approval to proceed with this. So we're asking, I asked Mitch to put this on to make sure that we have the ability to deal with those kinds of issues without calling a board meeting to review and approve something on very short notice. And normally, our school district clients would see a number as high as twenty thousand dollars for items like that. Now, obviously, if there is something that's not an emergency and you have plenty of time, it could come back to you as, as a change. But this is giving him the authority to be able to respond without delaying the project or creating an unsafe condition. So we're asking, what's your comfort level for that dollar amount?
Yeah, remember that the cost of any particular component of construction isn't that cost until it's bid, right? Till we know what the market's going to pay to do that work. And so to your point, your plumbing number might be high, and your electrical number might be low from where your budget was, but as long as they all fit within your overall budget, then everything works, right?
So, and if, let's say Kramer becomes a selective general contractor, and every bid that comes into them will be a sealed bid, because it will also, that would fall under that board policy.
You guys will be right there, you'll be staying in the room with me. You'll see the plumbing bids come in, whoever...
Whoever gets that, everything would be a sealed bid to that particular general.
I don't know about you guys, I, I feel like, as long as it's built into the contract that any significant changes would be, that are non-emergent, would be alerted to the board that we do what we've historically done in the past, and that it's to spend this policy as, as long as we approve the, the entire budget of the project. And under those assumptions that we'll be notified as to major changes.
You'd let us know, except that, because everything would go through Mitch, so not facing anybody in the dark on this project at all, so it would be, what I know is what you would know.
Because you remember, any of those numbers prior to them being bid are just budgets. You're not purchasing anything at that point in time. So if the schematic budget is over your referendum amount, for example, okay, you haven't purchased anything yet at that point in time. But then what typically happens is that we go back to work, get your number back down because we changed this and altered that, modify this, and then we think budget-wise we're back contracted. But you don't actually purchase to your, to how that reads. You're not purchasing until you contract with the subcontractor through your general contractor to purchase those services.
I would assume that as the process goes, if we start seeing that we're way over budget with things, we might want to change our approach to be more involved, just to know exactly why it's over budget and adjust that a little bit more with greater detail, but until that happens.
Yeah, I would, you know, I would have confidence in the builder, to Mitch, the builder, and decide to, you know, I don't think anything's going to get snuck by us.
Right. So do you need a motion to suspend that policy for this project, or is this just a point of clarification?
I think, I would just ask for a point of clarification. It's not an action item, you know, but if, if you're comfortable and give that direction moving forward, then that's the direction we'll go with. And again, just only pertain to this referendum project.
Let's bring this back Monday night, Doc, when we kind of think about it.
Okay. Can you put out the agenda for Monday night?
Sure.
Okay. Probably should have action on a Wednesday.
Okay.
All right, well, that's all that's on there. Is there anything else?
I think, I think so, Larry, we did approve on a, you are very, both for the, for the special, at a thirteen, fifteen dollar.
Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
That we adjourned?
Tony had it.
Yeah, he did, sir. It's surprising.
I got Dr. Dunn and Doc Lindsay, so then...
Sorry.
He's going to sit in opposite side.